There yet? What the kids ask when we're on a vacation. Are we there yet? Good. Okay, welcome to Santaquin City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, the sixteenth of January at seven o'clock. And we are ready to go. We're not going to suspend the roll call, but we will say that all of the councilmen are here, including Brian Del Rosario, who is on Zoom tonight. Brian will not be able to vote, but he has been a part of all these meetings so far. So we do have a full quorum and we are ready to go. So I would like to ask if anyone would like to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I'll do it.
Okay. I'd also like to ask if anyone would like to offer an invocation or give us an inspirational thought. Okay, love it. Ben, thank you. Are there any declarations or potential conflicts of interest on anything that we're going to work with tonight? Oh, okay. Then we will move forward with the first item, which is our consent agenda. It will include, and we'll first talk about items one, two, three, and four, the council work session and council sitting minutes for the nineteenth of December, and the work session and the minutes for the regular city council for the second of January. Are there any corrections, additions? If you had a chance, you've reviewed them. If anything's been sent in, we're good to go. Okay. No questions? We'll move on to the bills. City expenditures from the thirtieth to the twelfth of December, the amount of one million, six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. Did you go through those? Are there any questions, any issues? At this time? Okay. And the next thing is item six, community services has an out-of-state training. John Bradley had requested that. That's a budget item. Are there any questions or thing you want to discuss with that training?
As I read his memo, it seems like kind of a feather in your cap to be invited to attend that. So congratulations.
John's got a headdress, not just a feather in a cap. Okay, that's all of the items on the consent agenda. I would ask if anyone would make a motion to approve those. So moved. I've had a motion. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Councilman Adcock.
Hi.
Councilman Sitaway.
Hi.
Councilman Meacham.
Hi.
Councilman Keel.
Hi.
Motion pass. So we're ready to move on. Nobody signed up for the public forum? Like to go into recognitions.
Okay. Recognition, John Bradley will recognize Jen Wagner and her staff for... Yeah, awesome.
Perfect. This is truly a highlight for me to be with these fine ladies today, our staff at the library. And they do such a tremendous job. And, you know, in all of our day-to-day work, we don't always hear, you know, great job. We get lots of people that are having a rough day and so forth. But every time I go in the library, I'm greeted very pleasantly and they just, it just makes my day to go in there and get a good book to read or a CD to listen to. So I just want to give them kudos. But the real reason we're here is they have received recognition on a statewide level from the state, Utah State Library. And Jen, I'm going to let you hold the awesome award. But this letter came from the state librarian, Chandra Johnson. I want to just read a couple paragraphs because I think it spells out really what these ladies have done. The Utah State Library would like to recognize Santaquin City, Santaquin City Library for outstanding service to the community during the 2023 fiscal year. The award, the Quality Library Award is a designation that the state library determines during recertification, which is an annual process and requires public libraries to submit reports and data to indicate that their services are in accordance with state library standards. And I've seen the paperwork that Jennifer goes through each year to do that. It's amazing. So the Quality Library Award is a secondary application for library directors to indicate that the work they do and their staff have accomplished rise above and beyond the standards. So there's a certain level to just, hey, you're open and supported by the state, Utah State Library. And then there's the next level, which is a step above. As a quality library, excuse me, your institution is an active, involved, and vital part of the community. It provides resources and services beyond the four walls of the library with exemplary outreach to residents. The best libraries seek to serve their communities in specific ways to address local needs. The efforts being made at your library demonstrate an awareness of community needs with an appropriate and helpful response by the library. So let's give them a round of applause for this really nice award. And we've got some, just some goodies here, some chocolate and popcorn for a future staff meeting.
Right.
Jennifer, I'm just going to let you, if you would like to say, would you like to say anything?
Well, the main thing, we only have half of our staff. We have eight staff members, so all of them are what make the library honestly amazing and all the programs that they're in charge of. They're all really great leaders in the things that they do. So we couldn't do it without them either. So there's fifty-nine libraries and this year fifteen got the award. So, yeah, so really great that we can be recognized and that our staff to help be able to do that. So, thanks. Find the podium?
Yeah. Stand, yeah, back up. As the meeting started, the public forums signup page was handed to me, but nobody had signed it yet. I just got a notice that someone would like to speak. Oh, you talked to her? Oh, no. We'll give you five minutes. Come up. You're welcome.
I have a visual laid up there. It's an eight-second video. If that's not possible, that's okay. Please look at it when it's your convenience. The part of my town, it would be really cool.
Could you state your name for us, please?
Ross Williams.
Thank you. What was your last name?
Williams.
Williams.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The area where my house resides is between twenty, twenty-five years old, and it's starting to go to heck due to certain people moving in. I want to start off by commending Officer Bell. I've worked with Bell to clean up our area because it looks like crap. And he's actually helped and he's actually taken action. And he's done some good work getting broken-down cars out of front yards and different things like that. So we've scratched the surface. But unfortunately, I'm being told over and over again that there's a bunch of rules on the city ordinance list that's on the books, but they're just deciding not to enforce them. And I respectfully am going to request in 2024, we focus on this and we start enforcing what's on the books or get it off the books. For example, I've got a neighbor with seven dogs. That ruins three backyards. I've called, the neighbor on the other side's called, and little old widow behind is giving up her garden because she can't even step in her backyard. Seven dogs, city ordinance says three, no more than three without a kennel license. I've called, they know about it, nothing's being done. There's about a thirty, forty-year-old crappy camp trailer in their front yard with a couple living in it. City ordinance says can't live in somebody's front, I don't know why they can live in the front yard anyway. That's ridiculous. City ordinance says twenty days. They've been there for months. I know there's a burden of proof there. I'm a retired peace officer. I get it better than most. I tell them six-thirty in the morning, I leave for work every morning, the light's on. When I come home from work, the light's off. Light comes back on again between nine, ten P.M. Doesn't take a whole lot to figure out the couples living in there. They got two healers in there and their camp trailer, you know? Then the five dogs of the residence of the home, that's seven. The old alpaca farm on six ninety north, multiple empty vehicles. One's an old Derby car with car parts hanging out the windows. Other cars got tarps over them. It's just an eyesore. I care about Santaquin. I've been before, you know, the last city council is the volunteer of the month. I've coached over six years of the, over six years of the wrestling team. You know, one of my boys were coming through here. I can go on and on about what I do for the city, but in the interest of time, I care. What the way I say it is I have a lot of shiv to get for Santaquin. We spent a whole bunch of money beautifying this entryway. I appreciate that. Our neighborhood's pretty too. It's on the books and I commend the officers for the work that they've done. I'm a proud supporter of law enforcement. And I'm just asking in 2024, we put some focus on enforcing the city ordinance to get these ugly eyesores fixed. I'd be happy to knock on doors with them. I'd be happy to document the, when the lights come on, when the lights come off. I've been an investigator for many, many years and I'm really, really good at it. So that's it. I just want to make that respectful request that we don't let our town, if anyone studied the broken, broken windows theory in law enforcement, you know, Mr. Keel, you probably have. I believe in the broken windows. Let's fix the windows so people don't think they can just break other ones without damaging the property. Or let's keep our nice little town nice. That's my respectful request. Thank you.
Thank you. I like that. How to do it sometimes is really difficult. And I know that we fought some horrendous battles and it seems like at times you end up in court. The judge gives a fine, the people pay the fine, and then it's done. And then you repeat. And you give the fine and he pays the fine. Nothing's happened. And sometimes it is just, to some, it's easier to pay a fine. They raised the fine. Paid it again. And, and, you know, what you go to beyond that, I guess, is where we are with some of these. And, you know, I'm sure that many of us can tell you where some of these extra ones are. It should be nice to get them cleaned up. It, it, I really wish we had a way we could just do citywide. When I was a kid, they had, BYU came over, cleaned up for two or three days. And they painted houses and they cleaned up yards. Oh, my goodness. Made a difference. But, you know, you turn three, four thousand people loose and try to keep track of it in this day and age. It's just difficult. But, you know, it's certainly something that we need to do. I like your thoughts and I pay attention to it. Yeah.
Hey, Mayor, if I could get his address or if you could leave your address with Emily, we want to...
Emily's sitting right behind you there.
She's... Do your best with her, we'll get it and we'll look into it.
Thanks, Ross. Was there anybody else? Okay. We want to look at the building permits and the business license report.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, Norm's bringing that up. Oh, you've got it up already. So just, you know, we're still at the very beginning of the calendar year. We're up to ten new single-family homes. You can see this time last year, we hadn't had any yet. So already a little bit ahead of pace for calendar year 2024. Fiscal year-wise, we're up to ninety-eight. We're just a little over half of the fiscal year. And compared to the last fiscal year this time, we were at fifty, so we're ahead of pace there as well. And I should mention that that's total residential dwelling units. You can see down below that we have three building permits for commercial spaces in this fiscal year as a comparison to one last fiscal year. And then business licenses, there's no business licenses report to today. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have about building permits.
Good to see that number three businesses, isn't it? New business. Did we have any new business licenses?
No.
None?
No new business licenses to report.
Ordinance, we want to do a one-on-one, 2024, the Second Access Requirement Code Amendment. Discuss that at some length on the nineteenth of December. We talked about a lot of things. There was a motion made, never passed. Then there was a motion made to send it back to planning and zoning. I think that was reviewed and I don't want to go any further without saying, Rose, do you or Joe want to comment on anything before we go further? I mean, it's, it's out of, out of the usual norm, but I would invite you to come up if you'd like to.
On the nineteenth, we had a question about an email. And so I brought the copy of that email that was sent to Norm Bigley. Wrong. Hard time with that last name. And anyway, so I have a copy of that I'd like to share with you. And then I have a copy also of the contract termination that we had with the first business that was interested in the property. I have those to share. And also, you mentioned Pace and City Codes, that they had a ADT with, but they have following exceptions. And so anyway, I've highlighted the exceptions they have. And one of them is any mid-block or inner-block development. One that is contained inside a street block of no more than approximately five hundred feet in length. They have multiple units per access provided that all applicable fire regulations are met and the street blocks are maintained in compliance with PCC twelve point thirty, point oh, five oh, and any applicable street master plans. And I just wanted to say that wall property, my property is less than two hundred and sixty feet in length. So I wanted to point that out. And it also says there's an exception if any development or portion of a development which literally cannot provide two points of ingress and egress due to tropographic such as hillsides, waterways, or wetlands shall be limited to no more than fifteen residential lots or units or residential equivalents. The configuration shall adhere to all applicable fire regulations. And then that was in A. And then E, it says, access to parcels with slopes of greater than twenty feet shall satisfy the access requirements for PCC fourteen centime plans. And I brought this up in Planning Commission about if they were to access from the north or the west, you would have, because of the property dropping down after they've filled it in, you would have a slope there that would be twenty percent of a slope. I wanted to share that. Wanted to share the spring bill. The design location of all driveways entering a state highway shall meet the requirements of UDOT, Utah Department of Transportation. UDOT approval of the driveway shall be provided to the city in writing prior to issuance of a building permit. And Provo, the city engineer should make recommendations to the Utah Department of Transportation regarding control of vehicular access onto University Avenue. But in the end, whenever possible, as determined by city engineer and UDOT. And as we've all discussed, Spanish Fork City does not have an ADT or two-access requirement. I wanted to share that. I know I've shared this with a few of you. In the Santaquin City, ten point twenty, point one twenty, commercial zones. In five, it says, "Commercial zones should be located adjacent to major thoroughfares or collector streets which provide ease of access for automobile traffic without passing through residential areas. And any impacts to existing neighborhoods should be mitigated by new development." And then I also brought a copy of the Santaquin City Codes on their parking and circulation standards. And you have to go to page seven to get to the queuing, I mean, not to the queuing, to the access on that. And then this also has the queuing and the parking in it. And I was Googling and I just Googled what is Santaquin business-friendly? And for some reason, utabusiness.com, they had an article, it popped up. It's Pace and Santaquin Small Town Appeal Brings Population Growth. And it's by Rachel Barnes, December twenty-seventh, 2023. And in this, it mentions the need for local businesses. That's the desire to increase revenue to local businesses in this area is particularly significant when one considers the fact that seventy-five percent of businesses, business licenses distributed in Santaquin are for home-based businesses. The next paragraph, in that paragraph, it says, "If there's no revenue, there's no taxes to the county. To maintain city budgets, we need the revenue. If everybody's working from home or working up in Provo, there are not a lot of tax dollars." And a couple paragraphs down, it says, Santos List, Sippin', Java Pop, Simple Nutrition, Arctic Circle, Dairy Queen, and Iceberg as just a few of the hotspots in the area. Parenthesis, she says, "Santaquin is Burger City." She jokes. I thought that was very sad.
Did she buy one?
Buy what?
A burger.
Anyway, I'd like to share that with you.
I was just curious. Thank you.
I, we had a meeting with Walls and Mr. Wiggle, the owner of Wiggy Wash, last Friday. And I've done a lot of research since then. Tried to follow up on the sales tax thing because he says that they generate sales tax in Spanish Fork on the Wiggy Wash. What I think is happening there is because they have a detail shop. The code, Norm talked to me about the code today. I haven't read it, but the code specifically says car washes do not generate sales tax. So I, I don't know, that's all the code says. And I talked to others today and that's what I got back on that too, plus what I talked to Norm about. But Travis and I had the meeting on Friday and I followed up with Brianna Nixon that day. And again, no, I followed up with her on Saturday and again today. And she is more than willing to have a discussion about a joint access. I sent an email to Mr. Wiggle and he had not contacted her as of yet. But I think there's a way to make that happen. I talked to Norm about that today. The city is more than willing to work with them on that, but they're going to have to get together on that because that is a way to make that happen. That joint access can go on either property. It can go west or it can go east onto the Sinclair to make it so that this business can come to town without the city council. It doesn't matter what we say. And I know that conversation started with Councilman Sitaway to Brianna. And I followed up because I've known her for years. She is willing to have the conversation. And we heard Mr. Wiggle say in that meeting that he's willing to have the conversation and, and work with her. They know each other already. So my advice would be whatever we pass or don't pass on this tonight, that that conversation happen regardless. And I don't know if you guys can help with that because that conversation hasn't happened as of two hours ago. But I think that would be a good place to start after this.
Well, I know this has been an issue that people have taken to heart. I just want to say, from the very beginning, I stated in a meeting that you can't go against an ordinance that has been set up. We swore to the Constitution of Utah and of the United States that we would uphold the laws and live by the ordinances and the laws that were set. This process, as drug-out as it is, we don't have another way around it other than to look at it and to change the zoning. And the zoning changes have been done. Even when Andrea Lee came in, he didn't mention, while she stood at the pulpit here, that he changed zoning twice for her and met her request and went through the process. We never held him up. And, and we have never said, I've never said, hey, you can't put a car wash there. That's, that's not the issue. The issue was, can you find another access? And Joe and I had a conversation two months plus ago. And I said, have you talked to Jan Lee? Yeah, he said he had. And, and Lisa? And he didn't, didn't answer. But, you know, we have even set in these new industrial parks, common fronts to where parking can be handled out in the, in the front of the businesses and allow for people to park all along the strip. That's in our new industrial park. So I think where, you've talked to Brianna, that's a good icebreaker. That's a good way to look at this and resolve this totally. But I also think we need to look at what the recommendation that was made because it's different than the way that it exists right now. Not only that, we did it twice. And we did it twice because I know you talked to Dave and Dave decided to make that recommendation, but it landed with this council making a decision, let's go forward and look at it again. Do we need to do something? And we're held by those bodies, like planning and zoning and DRC, because state law requires us to. And in the future, there's a lot of things that the council won't even have a chance to work on because it'll go to the, to planning and zoning and to the DRC. And once planning and zoning says it's good to go, it meets all the zoning requirements, it'll never come before the city council. And, and so laws are changing. We're just trying to keep ourselves out of jail, but also trying to accommodate... We're just trying to keep ourselves out of jail, but also trying to accommodate as best we can. With that, you've all had a chance to look through the requirements and the suggestions from planning and zoning, which they looked at two times, I think was really critical. They evaluated it. I think they took their time to make sure they were looking at each piece individually. I think they've taken a lot of the things that even Rose has brought before them and before us. And we've all read those and looked at them. So I thank you for being so thorough. But I would like to move on with what we can. We can address it as it goes from there. So are there any questions to that suggestion on the second ask access requirement from twenty twenty-four? Can I entertain a motion for that?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number oh one oh one twenty twenty-four, an ordinance amending Santaquin City code to modify the second access requirement to a parking facility, providing for codification, correction of scrivener's errors, severability, and an effective date for the ordinance.
Second?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Councilman Adcock?
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway?
Aye.
Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
Councilman Keel? That passes. Questions? Okay. So that changes that code. Public facilities zone change. Want to go over that?
Yeah, Mayor and Council. So this is a proposed rezone for various different properties around the city. This may be the first wave of, of two or three. Really, the way this came about was there was some work that was looking to be done on some city-owned property. And as I was coordinating with, with our, it was actually our public works director on, on what to do on that property. I recognized that, that there's some conflict sometimes between what the city uses its property for around the city and the zoning that it's in. And so to, to address that, what's, what's being proposed tonight is to rezone various city-owned properties around the city to a public facility zone, which will allow for some flexibility and, and basically allow for the city to fulfill its purpose of why they own that property. For example, on the screen, you have the cemetery, which right now is, is located in a residential zone R eight. City doesn't have any intentions of ever developing it to be residential homes. It's going to be a cemetery forever. And so to have that in a public facility zone makes a lot more sense because of the unique things that happen on the cemetery and, and the, the way the, the city maintains and, and functions on, on the cemetery. Property to the north of it actually was, was the property that kind of brought this to light of, of that property was, was purchased with the intention of, of being able to aid in the maintenance of the cemetery, to provide a place where, where piles of materials can be put during a burial or, or maintenance or, or other projects with the cemetery. And then as we went throughout the city, we, we recognized other pieces of property that fit more within a public facilities type of a purpose rather than the zoning which it currently is. So like I say, there was a total of a hundred and seventy, almost a hundred and eighty acres of city-owned properties as part of this particular ordinance to, to rezone property, which required a lot of notification letters. And so that's, that's why I say there might be a couple more waves of, of city-owned property because each time a rezone takes place, we need to provide proper notification to, to people who are within the vicinity of those, those properties that are considered to be rezoned. So this first wave is, is various properties that are included in the packet and, and which put it into a zoning designation that makes a lot more sense for the purpose that that, that property is being used for. This, this went through a legislative process. Again, we had a public hearing after notification letters. The planning commission reviewed this and they, they forwarded a positive recommendation to the city council for this amendment to the zoning map. I don't know if there's much more I need to say than that, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have about this proposal.
I think it opens up another half an acre for the cemetery to be gone to. And just barely offsite to move the dirt, to dig the graves and have a place to stage. And there are certain moving instructions to keep it in that same direction. It's got to be close to the house. Questions or comments or anything?
I will renew my concern regarding the lot across from the cemetery. I don't feel like that the, the city ought to play the role of do what I say, but don't do, do, you know, don't do what I do, do what I say. The rest of the rezoning, I think is okay, but if I had a house adjacent to that property that's outlined there and read on the screen, I would be concerned about a forty by sixty building being built there and a lot of, a lot of traffic and, and stuff going in and out.
Is there any place where it says there's a forty by sixty?
There's, I know Jason Callaway has been working on it in, in preparation for the budget. I don't think he's come up with a specific proposal. I don't know, maybe Councilman Adcock's talked, Adcock's talked to, to our public works director. But as far as I'm, I know there's not a specific proposal for the size of building on that piece of property.
So just, just out of curiosity, I want to ask a question back. Is it wise then to keep the equipment that we need for that, for cutting the lawns and down at the city sheds and have to ferry it back and forth every time? That just concerns me.
I think this is inappropriate, that lot for the residents that live around it.
I totally understand what, what Art's saying, Councilman Adcock is saying, but I don't, I don't have the same concern. I think this would kind of clean up a lot of that traffic that you talk about going clear to the other end of town, clear on the north end of town, staging it closer to the cemetery, I think will not only save time and money, but I think it'll, it'll clean it up and keep a lot of that traffic off the road. And I don't, notice has gone out and we didn't have any complaints. So I, I don't see it as a major issue.
I don't see that we have the equipment that we can just store a backhoe there in that building to use exclusively for digging graves and filling them back in. Dirt removal can be loaded in a trailer or back of a truck for thirty-six hours and put back in the hole. Anyway, I don't want to beat a dead horse. This is, those are my concerns.
I do think they have equipment just for the cemetery though, don't they?
We, they stage equipment at cemetery typically even on weekends where somebody will come in on call and right now it's being stored outside and we've actually had some damage to some of the equipment on site because it doesn't have a building to be in. And so that's one of the issues that we have is again, to run a backhoe during a burial on a Saturday or something, you know, take away to get to and from the public works building. And if there's only one person on call, who drives the truck and who drives the backhoe? So there's some, some other issues that could potentially be there that, that we probably ought to be looking at. I understand Councilman Adcock's concern. It isn't like the city is trying to, to do something that is nefarious or, or, you know, out of place. It is just trying to make use of property that they, that the, the city has purchased for the, for the purpose of purchasing the property.
I think there's a couple of things there. The, the lot directly east behind where this was, guy decided to bring in a bunch of concrete and stacked five, six feet high through most of that lot. This is topsoil basically, once they have dug a grave and staged it in an area where they can back. It's just minimizing drive time, minimizing hours, minimizing wear and tear on equipment, I think. She's, every time we cross Main Street with a backhoe or a lawnmower, we're taking our lives in our hands. I'm sure that.
Crossing Main Street is not easy anytime with anything.
Well, I think you're.
We're working on that too. This is a different story.
You know, I think you're right in a lot of ways with that. But it's also co-located in a good enough spot that it will be a place where I think it, it should reflect good housekeeping with public works people. And it should be a very good lot once it's done. So it should be neat and tidy.
I didn't think about what Jeff said, that notices were set out and people had a chance to express concern and apparently there wasn't any. Just me.
Well, planning commission, at least Mike Wade did have a similar concern, not specifically for this lot, but he just wanted to make sure that they weren't approving something that would cause, allow the city to have more power than we should.
Right.
And they talked about it for a little bit, not, they couldn't think of any real issues that would come up with it and they still passed you down the slate. I, I see your concerns, but I just go back to the notices were sent out, what, five hundred feet from the property? Not a single complaint about it, not a single comment. Maybe they don't understand the scope of it, what's going to happen, but either way, there weren't any complaints.
Okay.
I, I think there's one thing that ought to be noted with this though. You know, that's, we'll go ahead and make an action on it tonight, but there are properties that are located within here. For instance, there's a wellhouse up on the east bench, directly behind Maverick up in that area. Multiple neighbors have called me as to how unkempt that yard is. We really should take pride in the properties that we have in neighborhoods that people have already called on, not necessarily one that we could improve. What, what was there before was a crack house. Now what we have is the opportunity to at least dress it up, store some equipment there, have a place as a repository for the dirt that we pull out and give it to the city. Nothing more than that. It's not like they're going to go asbestos or something. So any other comments? I am not showing these things. I would entertain a motion on ordinance oh one oh two twenty twenty-four.
Can I make a motion that we approve ordinance number zero one dash zero two dash two thousand twenty-four, an ordinance amending the zoning map of Santaquin City, more specifically approving the rezoning of approximately a hundred and seventy-nine point four nine acres from the residential R eight zone, the industrial I one zone, the planned community PC zone, and the Main Street Commercial MSC district within the Main Street district zone, to the public facilities PF zone, providing severability and effective date for the ordinance.
Okay. Is that a motion? Is there a question or do you have a second?
I'll second.
Right. Councilman Adcock?
Start at the other end.
I can do that.
No.
Councilman Keel?
Yes, aye. Sorry.
Councilman Sitaway?
Aye.
Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
Councilman Adcock?
I still have my concerns for the sake of unity of the council on it. It's going to pass anyway and, and I will vote yes.
In other words, they shamed you into it. Is that what you're trying to say?
Sure.
No, you guys had your chance. Made me do a part.
Yeah.
Okay. The food trucks code amendment. Now, the whole, the whole idea behind this food trucks is state law allows food trucks park on, on the side of a city street.
Not quite.
Well, it's, but it's, but it pretty much says that.
If, if the city allows for it to be parked on the side of the street.
Well, yeah, but there's also some pretty loose ordinances that go along with it too. I think what this does is it gives us a chance to look at a, a small area of town, direct that traffic to that point and evaluate it for a year, see how it works. These are businesses that sometimes turn into more major businesses, but they're also mom and pop shops that are trying to make something happen and they've invested a lot of money into these vehicles. A lot of people go to them, you know, I think all of us have. I like what they do. I like a lot of the food. Look at me, I eat too much of it. Anyway, would you like to go over it, Jason?
Yeah. So this is something that the council's seen. There was some good feedback given at the last meeting and, and hopefully I've been able to incorporate that into, in, in a way that, that met your, your comments. I know that there was another comment from Councilmember Del Rosario. I don't know if he wants to speak to that here in a minute, but essentially we, we've tried to address all the concerns that we know at this time. This is kind of a new thing and, and I think by nature of, of the suggestion to make this a temporary ordinance, which means that if this were to be approved tonight as drafted, that it would, this ordinance would expire January seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. And really that would be a time for the council to kind of evaluate how this, this worked in the location, which is supposed to be the, the northeast corner of Centennial Park. They could, they could see the positive and negative effects and, and consider if they want to continue forward with, with this, this allowance in that area for food trucks. This would be kind of a, a regular place for food trucks to go without much of a, an approval process. We, we do in the code, in this draft language, say that they need to come meet with community development to understand what the rules are. But well, once they, they come and meet with us, then it's really a place where they can go on a regular basis to, to, you know, operate their food truck and, and provide a service and maybe some synergy to, to our park. So with that said, unless you have questions for me, I think this has been addressed. We've, we've reviewed it together. I've reviewed it with legal counsel to, to try and, and look at everything. Like I say, I know Councilmember Del Rosario emailed me and, and had some concerns related to noise. But other than that, I look to you on, on what you'd like to do with this, this particular ordinance.
I appreciate what you've done. It answered the questions I had, so thank you.
I did want to, if you can hear me, am I interrupting someone? No.
Go ahead.
Um, I did, did want to share the one concern that I did have is, I mean, I've gone camping. I don't, I'm not fortunate enough to have a camp trailer, but I've gone camping with people that do have a camp trailer and I've camped along a gas generator. And obviously we're talking about a park, but I know that at times gas generators can be very disruptive and loud. And so that was my only concern regarding this. I think that, that the noise ordinance is talking to Jason, you know, are relevant for that situation. Obviously it's very difficult, but I think that there's a lot of great opportunity here. Like, like Rose shared earlier, we're Burger Town. I think a lot of residents in town would appreciate more food options and I think this is a great way. I just think we need to be mindful, make sure that, that as food trucks come in to be alert about added noise that might, that might degenerate from that. I know residents live next to a park, but I mean, I don't want to go sit, watch my kids play and have a loud generator if it's excessively loud. But I don't think, I think that'd be a very rare case. I just wanted to share that concern.
Thank you. We do have a couple of food trucks in town already that are regulars and I don't think that's been an issue. Yeah, they use generators.
But I can see getting four or five together, all with generators that might start getting a little bit. Um,
I know residents live next to a park, but, I mean, I don't wanna go sit, watch my kids play, and have a loud generator if it's excessively loud, but I don't think, I think that'd be a very rare case. I just wanted to share that concern.
Thank you. We do have a couple of food trucks in town already that are regulars, and I don't think that's been an issue. Yeah, they use generators.
But I can see getting four or five together, all with generators, that might start getting a little bit. Maybe in the future, if we start seeing an issue with that, we could add to Section D, "It's too loud, so we can ask you to leave," type of thing.
Well, and that's the beauty of this temporary ordinance, is it's kind of a trial period of seeing how it goes. You know, in my communication with Councilmember Del Rosario, it's, is generators and noise that come from generators can actually be kind of a hard thing to enforce or to address. You know, there's sometimes language that talks about decibel levels. Well, where do you measure the decibel levels at and that sort of thing? What I suggested in my response to him, and I guess I give as a response to the council, is if there's a concern with noise, I think probably the easiest thing to enforce and to work with is, would be the time in which they're allowed. Right now, we allow for food trucks to operate there until 9:00 PM. That might be too late, if the noise is sensitive to people that are trying to settle down, or go to sleep, or whatever, maybe there's a consideration of changing the curfew, if you will, for food trucks to operate. But, you know, with all the activities that we had and other activities that happened in the park that can be kind of noisy, I think it kind of goes with a park, but that's just kind of some thoughts that I had in my communication with Councilmember Del Rosario. So, I just give that to you, if that's something you'd like to reconsider in the language that's before you tonight.
And I do wanna follow up. I think that, I think that the language adds is, I think it's fine. I think the approach of taking a temporary ordinance is a great approach. I think there's things to, I just think it's something that we should keep in mind. I know, I've been to each of the food trucks that are in town, they're amazing, and we're so lucky to have people betting on Santaquin. And I wanna support that. I know that in the past, someone had made a comment about one of the food trucks having a loud generator, and the owners of that food truck are amazing, and responded, and, you know, tried their best to make it quieter, and I haven't noticed it being loud at all. And so, I think it's just something to keep in mind, maybe even as food trucks come in to meet with the city, that that's something that they can be made aware of, just operationally, something we can do.
I think the hours from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM are reasonable, and I think this location, as close as it is to Main Street and at a park, I don't think generators are gonna be a huge issue. I also think a lot of these food trucks, that's something they already consider, is if their generator's too loud, that's gonna drive business away. But with this being a temporary ordinance, we'll take a look in a year, but I think what we have so far is pretty reasonable.
When I've been at the food trucks on Main Street, it's, there's more noise from the traffic than from their generators.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question, again, I have a comment. I like the ordinance, I like the fact that it's temporary. 9:00 at night right now seems awful late, but come this summer, 9:00 will be very early.
Yeah, that's true.
And so I think the timing is good, I like it Monday through Friday.
And just a reminder, the way the council suggested this move forward, is this is meant to be, I should say, this language is drafted to allow it for the entire year. This isn't just a summer food truck thing, this is all year.
Well, really, the question here is the 9:00 thing? And Art and I are so old that 9:00, we're already in bed anyway, who eats after 9:00?
Unrelated to this ordinance, that particular area is going to be really busy with traffic. River Health is putting a doctor's office right across the street. I don't know where those condominium apartments and the doctor's office and everybody else is gonna park their vehicles in that area. Parking in that block area concerns me.
Yeah, speaking to the Centennial Park condominiums and the business there, they have approved parking for when they were, they built. It was obviously-
It's inside the compound, isn't it?
Or it's right there on the south side of that lot, that's the city front-
Isn't there some on the inside, too, for that?
Yeah.
There is.
In the middle.
So the parking for that should be covered. You bring up a valid point, that we don't really have formal parking for Centennial Park. Now, we have baseball games and stuff, people parallel park along there. Currently, the spot that's been contemplated and which has actually been somewhat designated in the intentions that, you know, have been written with this code, is to be on that really wide gravel shoulder on the northeast corner of the park. So, that is a good point, that there's not formal parking, but I think with everything that goes on at Centennial Park, including major events like Orchard Days and some of the other days, you know, parking is, you know, tends to work out for those sorts of things. But, again, temporary ordinance, it may be something that we look at, and maybe even be something that the council sees as a reason to budget for and do more formal parking, and finish the perimeter of Centennial Park with some, you know, perpendicular or 45-degree parking to accommodate these types of things at the park.
Well, we did talk about putting a sidewalk all the way around it at one point, that was even in a budgeted item.
Or a trail, a walking trail, I mean, there's a number of things we could do to try and help address that concern.
Are you suggesting we need more and bigger parking lots?
No, not necessarily. Like I say, I think for-
Naughty.
That was a, kind of an inside joke there, but, no, there's certainly an appropriate time to provide parking, and it's a valid point that Centennial Park does not have any formal parking. It's kind of just been on the side of the shoulder.
Do you happen to remember when the parking was approved for those condos? Was there a discussion about a future business being there sometime?
So, I can jump in on that, I was here when that happened, and what I can tell you is that the parking is more than the parking requirement was at the time, but less than our current standard. So it's in the middle there, and yes, businesses were contemplated as part of that parking. In fact, one of the things that they're building from it to do the tenant improvements inside the building has them doing is designating some of those parking stalls on the south side as business parking, which should have been done many years ago when it was put in, but that way, it will actually help people to utilize the parking that's on the inside.
Okay.
So I've been through many of the parking situations in the city, from high density to this location to others, and I can tell you, in general, I'm not saying this site specifically, the parking is adequate if people will use it properly. It's just more convenient, most of the time, for people to park on the street, and if it's after or before business hours, that's great, that's the intent. It's actually intended to have shared parking.
Thank you.
You bet. Sorry, that's completely off-topic, but I hope that helps Councilmember Adcock's question.
Okay, then, I would entertain a motion.
May I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 01-03-2024, and ordinance creating provisions for food trucks, providing for codification, corrections of Scrivener errors, severability, and an effective date for the ordinance.
Add a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Before we vote on it, was there a comment? Centennial Park Pavilion issue?
I wonder if it's three.
It should say "are allowed," right? Take out the "no" right there, that's a good catch.
Thank you.
Yep.
We're taking out the "no" in the front.
Yep.
Either way.
Yep, we'll address that. Thank you.
Is that a Scrivener error, or do we need to modify the motion?
That's essentially a Scrivener error, that's what I thought.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Councilmember Adcock.
Aye.
Councilman Meacham.
Aye.
Way.
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Dennis, for catching that. We are at the Santaquin Research Tech Center Update Development Agreement Resolution.
Yeah, I'm here in council, so this is a, this is a resolution that's very similar to a resolution the council approved back in, I believe it was July of last year. This is a proposed development in conjunction with the rezone for property at the very south end of the city, along the Old Mona Road, whatever that road's called, feels like it's got five names. Basically, just south and across the street from the Murdoch Ford business. So this is property that, like I say, was approved, had a development agreement, but the development agreement just was delayed in getting signed, and therefore was delayed in getting recorded. And so, during the last couple of months or so, the owners of this property, or the representative for these properties contacted the city and said, "There's actually some tweaks we'd like to make to the site layout for this project." Also, during that time, they purchased the property, and the entities that effectively purchased the property, or are now on the property, they were different than what was in the approved development agreement. So, because the development agreement never got signed, because it never got recorded, this is kind of, in essence, just tweaking some things and then reapproving it, or amending your approved resolution for this action. In terms of the changes, like I say, there's changes to dates and the technicalities of the name that is on the property, but in terms of the site layout, Norm's got it up on the screen. There was a couple tweaks on where the accesses would be. There's a little bit of grade at the southern end of the portion, or the portion that's on the right side of the screen. So they needed to kind of work through that and make it so that it could work out a little bit. They're gearing up to turn in a site plan, and so, as they looked at it closer and looked at the feasibility of building it, a couple of those things came to light. So, that's essentially what the change is. I think there was an additional rendering that they had, that they wanted as an option to build as, and I felt like the rendering was pretty close to identical, just a little bit change in the color or whatnot. And Norm will zoom, it's to the very, very bottom. You know, they kept everything that's in there that was already proved, but there was one additional picture that I think gave them maybe a little bit more flexibility on a style that they wanted to have. So you can, as Norm's scrolling through there, you can see the style that they've always indicated in there, but this new style is just slightly different. I mean, you probably couldn't even tell that it was a different, it was a different style, but that's the new picture that they put in there. If you scroll just slightly, Norm, you can see that it's pretty close to what was already there, so it seemed like it was, it was not really much of a change. So, that's essentially what is here, is, like I say, kind of for your reapproval or an amendment of the resolution, which you passed last year, with just those couple technical changes, and then the couple changes related to the site layout and the renderings that they have. I should say, John Jensen wasn't able to be here tonight. He's been kind of the point person that we've worked with all along through this project, but he did, does have somebody here, Eric, here in the audience, does work with John and can represent what it is they're trying to do there, in case you have any questions for him. But other than that, I turn this over to you for your consideration of this resolution to approve this development agreement.
Jason, I think it's fair to say that, other than that one rendering and the site plan and the dates, there's not been any-
That's correct.
What we would call material changes to the agreement. So it's essentially the same agreement with a different site plan and a different, an additional building and different dates. There's not been any intent or changes in the document that would question us having to do an extensive review back on it from that point.
Right.
And also, Legal's been through it as well, Brett's been through it as well, with Jason and staff to get through it, so.
I know I'm gonna ask council, but would you like to just stand and say anything? Answer any questions?
Finally, your turn, thanks for being patient.
Yeah, I'm glad you got to sit through everything to this point.
Well, I can sleep with my eyes open, so. No, I mean, you know, it's a great, it's a great property. We were marketing it as the first property in Utah County. I'm up from the south. Fantastic, really.
Oh, yeah.
Of Utah County, so. Very excited about it, and John had the layouts, if you look at the building envelopes. Process of access, I mean, it's right there. South to the north.
These are all businesses that you're gonna put in there. What was the exact square footage of the three buildings combined?
450,000 is what they're looking at right now, and that's been, I think the last time we looked at this, there was four buildings instead of three, I think is really the only real change. And then the access layout to adjust for the topography, I think, is the other big thing.
The first building, which is on the south. With great visibility, of course. Adds some requests for tenants.
I know that John's, has some people that are interested, he hasn't shared with me any details about who those parties are.
We have, we have some parties, I mean, we've had a lot of parties, actually, about the property.
A party place, huh?
Yeah.
We were never invited to the parties, no, I'm just kidding.
We have had, we have had a party. No fabrication is not, like habit for buildings and so forth. Does fit within the-
You mentioned the word industrial, the zoning for this is commercial light manufacturing, so it's something that we would look at. Sounds like it's not manufacturing steel, it's more taking steel and manufacturing something that's fabricating it. So, anyways, yeah, it's, the intent of this is to be a mix of businesses that could go from anywhere to steel fabrication, or still, whatever this business would be, to other things that might be even more retail in nature. It just depends on what kind of interest they generate in those buildings.
Yeah, and it wouldn't be, I mean, those businesses wouldn't create a lot. First building is the property that we do currently have, so.
And that's a good point, but what he's talking about does need to go through its own site plan approval process. So, the use and the actual details of this would go through a separate approval process. This is just more of a high-level site layout that accompanies the development agreement. So, what he's talking about is the first I've ever heard of it, but it's something that we'll go through and it'll be part of the review process to make sure that it complies with the development agreement and our zoning ordinances.
Questions? So what, I thank you for investing in Santaquin. Grateful, and we welcome businesses, the- Grateful and we welcome businesses that you plan to bring and, you know, you probably dream as high as, as John does. And John's meeting with us some time ago, it was, I wanna make this happen. I used to live here. And I, I think it's been really good and refreshing and we thank all the work and in fact, the inspiration that you give to invest in Santaquin.
I, I grew up in Salt Lake City and. Thought that was a small town and now it's.
It was.
So I'm not trying to tell you guys what's happening, what's coming, but it's coming. It's coming down here.
We know.
And so we're, we're, we wanna be part of that frontier.
Eric, would you state your full name for the record?
It's Eric Jurgensen.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it. Okay, I would entertain a motion to make that small change that they had asked for in response to the, the approval that was actually given seven months ago, so. So moved. Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Councilman Adcock?
Aye.
Councilman Keel?
Aye.
Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway?
Aye.
What we just did here is we have the signatures already. The mayor can sign this after the meeting and then they'll be reported within the week.
I think he's already signed it.
Go.
Okay. Do you wanna hang around a while? You, you know, you may wanna go to the end.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, second resolution which actually coincides with the next resolution as well, the water agency. And this is to put representation from the city on these boards. It's, has to be done by resolution and it's required to be done now. So we made a couple of changes. Do you wanna go over?
I, I'd be happy to, yeah. So this first resolution is just appointing Councilman Meacham as the, as the representative on the Sumo Board with Councilmember Adcock as the, as the alternate. And the next resolution will be the exact same thing, but for the Mountain Evo Agency. So I'm happy to answer any questions. This is just a formal appointment from the mayor's assignments that he's already given.
The, the other thing and the reason why I really want the backup too, you know, it gives a chance if Lynn can't be there, or it also gives him a chance to share and that we get both of you way up to speed on what's going on. Wouldn't hurt if you both attended at times, but it also, Norm is usually at every one of these meetings too, but I think important that you go and you have each other to kind of lean on through this, so.
Just because that's what I need is more meetings. I, I attend all of these that I'm able to do. So if I'm not able to attend, I'm happy to have a, a briefing discussion on agenda items beforehand. But for the most part, I attended probably ninety-five percent of them with Dave.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion for Resolutional 105. So moved. Been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded. Councilman Adcock?
Am I allowed to vote on this?
It is appropriate for you to vote, yes.
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Meacham?
Aye.
Sitaway?
Aye.
I would entertain a motion for Resolution Number 0106. Evo Board, same thing. So moved. Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. These same two men are gonna take care of these issues. So, uh. Councilman Adcock?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Meacham?
Aye.
Sitaway?
Aye.
Seven twenty-four fee schedule. Norm, do you wanna go over that and hit the major things?
Yep, Mayor and Counsel, we talked about this in the work session. There is one item that I need to, to update you on. Let me reshare the screen here with. Essentially, there's three, there's three actions on the fee schedule. One is to update our sewer impact fees for both regular homeowners and other ADUs and then also for parks and recreation. There'll be three different, um, park impact fees accordingly for, essentially for smaller and smaller home sizes. Those are the, the items that were on the agenda and were in the packet. As I indicated, there's two other items that we need to update for the library that they actually have updated on their fee schedule on the website, but it needs to coincide with this one. Just out of, out of, our non-resident library cards are sixty dollars, not forty dollars. And if there's a special interlibrary loan per item is three dollars instead of one dollar. And I've talked to Counsel or to Brett, our, our legal counsel, we're good to do this change in here. And so I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have or anything of that nature. I would indicate that the impact fees for the, for the, both the sewer and the parks, you may remember six months, or three months ago, we did both of those. We held a public hearing, we adopted the IFFP and IFAs. This now is the waiting period is over, that the state requires a ninety day waiting period for us to go ahead and implement these maximum fees.
Did actually have a question on that. Someone brought up to me on the ADU.
Huh?
Part. So if someone wants to put a detached accessory dwelling, is that a nine thousand dollar?
Essentially, in this case, it's for those, just those two impact fees would be eighty-five hundred dollars, yes. So that, that's not unusual. A, a normal, what I will call set of impact fees for a home in Santaquin with the building permit is, is in the fifteen to twenty thousand dollar range per home. Typically, a multifamily is a little less than that. As you can see, we have multifamily, we have accessory dwelling units. That, it goes down from there, but, but it really depends on the home size, the home value, obviously related to the size, the lot value, the lot size.
Depending on the size of the ADU.
Yes.
And if we didn't put these in there, would they just be doing this?
They would be, yes, yes. So these, these two things that are near the bottom section of each one of those are implementation of strategies that we have.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Inter moderate income housing plan.
Right. Yeah, and to what Norm's saying, that, the detached accessory dwelling unit fee that's adjusted there for sewer is actually a ten percent reduction of, of what would have been proposed or, or what would have been justified.
Charged, yeah.
In, in the master plan update. So we already did that with the parks and recreation trails and open space last year, which helped fulfill a strategy. This adjustment for the, with the ten percent reduction is gonna help us with, with the report that we're gonna need to do this year. And I'll, I'll actually speak a little bit more, more to that, but that is part of this fee schedule update is, is that action that we did get credit for, meaning a strategy in the last report, which we will now get credit for in this, this upcoming report this year.
And on the interlibrary loan, what other libraries do we borrow from? Is it just Payson?
It's just Payson that I'm aware of, but there may be others. Because we're connected with Payson, we may be able to get people's stuff through a different library other than Payson. I don't, I don't know the answer to that. That's a, that's a librarian question, not a city manager.
You can save yourself three dollars by driving to Payson, but.
Okay, that's a, that's a librarian question, not a city manager question. I know a lot, a lot, but I don't know.
I work in the library industry, so.
Okay.
We talked to them about that. All their fees were supposed to be fluent all the way through the Wasatch front.
Um, they, the only one that I know of that we are perfectly congruent with is Payson because we have the, I don't know if we have an actual interlocal agreement, but we have an agreement with Payson. And so therefore their fees are our fees and our fees are their fees for, for certain fees.
Their cars work over there, their cars work over here.
That's correct, that's correct, yep. Yep.
Okay. Any questions? Can I entertain a?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Councilman Keel?
Aye.
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 Councilman?
Aye.
Councilman Adcock?
Aye.
Development agreement.
We're done, right? That was number fourteen and then next is reports. So you have two originals, one for us, one for them.
Right.
Yes, both of them.
All right. Start with you.
Huh? Yeah, Mayor and Counsel, so just a reminder, I appreciate everybody giving the RSVP. I will coordinate with the Chamber of Commerce on the, the annual gala event, which is February eighth at six PM. I'll, I'll make sure that everybody who, who RSVP will be able to attend. And in relation to, to that, and, and I guess this is good for Councilmember Meacham, since this is one of your assignments, but next Tuesday is the Chamber of Commerce annual retreat, if you will, kind of their, their annual meeting where they talk about the budget and, and other things. It's very similar to the, the annual budget retreat that the council has. So that is next week at six o'clock. I can give you more details after the meeting, Councilmember Meacham, but you'd be invited to attend that and, and hear what. Our meeting, but. So that's, it's, you know, if you have any more, more comments or feedback for me as I, I go into that meeting, I, I want to best represent Santaquin City, um, sitting in, on, on that board. So we have that. I, I do also want to report that I've, I've been, been informing the council about the letter of non-compliance we got from the state for the moderate income housing plan. I did submit the, resubmit that plan last week and we're waiting, we'll wait to hear what they say. I'm, I'm very confident that we're gonna be just fine. It was really one number that they were looking for, but we felt like it was, it was also appropriate to take the time to, to really give more information on, on a couple of the strategies. I know Councilmember Keel and Councilmember Del Rosario are new to that and, and maybe I can explain that to you another time, but it's, it's a, it's a state mandate to incorporate or to, to take action and, and make progress on moderate income housing strategies. We have these strategies in our general plan and, and like was done in the last agenda item, there's things, actions that we take to, to be in compliance with that. It's a big deal because if we're not in compliance with it, then the penalty is extremely big. It's not, not having access to, to state transportation funds and it could even result in a, a daily fine from the state. So it is a very big deal that we do that and we're, we're, you know, along with the action we just took, but some plans in community development with our senior planner Ryan Harris, we're, we're looking at things that we can do to make sure that we're in compliance for the report that we're gonna need to submit in, before October or August first, I believe is the date. So just wanna let you know that that is resubmitted. The deadline for that was the twenty-third of this month, so we should be good there and, and I will let you know when, when we're in compliance. Aside from that, I think that's it for me, unless you have any questions for me.
Yeah, so the all-knowing and all. Legislative session started today for our state legislators. I was thinking it was tomorrow, but I got an email that. Wrong, it's actually started today. Local officials' day is tomorrow. If you're planning to attend that, that's great. If you're not, that's fine too. I've tried to send out invites to the trainings that, that, I think I got you at the last council meeting, I sent out invites to all the trainings that I'm aware of that go through ULCT. And also I would just remind you, if you plan on going to the ULCT conference and you've not RSVP'd to me or to Emily, please get with us so that we can make sure that we get hotel registration done and, and conference registration done for you. Also next week on the twenty-fifth, if you'll remember, is the neighborhood meeting regarding the environmental assessment meeting for the neighborhood on the east bench. They'll be coming in and talking about the same thing that we've been talking with a dozen or so business and property owners. We met with another property owner today, the mayor and I and UDOT and, and Horox and just walked them through kind of the process and heard any, any concerns that they had or answered any questions regarding the EA. And remember that that's a year-long process. This is the scoping phase that we're in now. Soon as they have the neighborhood meeting, they'll kind of hit the ground running and, and, and figure out how to, to flesh out the study and figure out what alternatives there are and, and where we go for everything from a no build scenario to a complete reconstruct of the interchange at Main Street and, and I-15.
Did you say a time on that?
Uh, it's at five-thirty in the, in the multi-chain, multi-purpose room here. I, I will not be here that day. I will actually be out of town at a conference, but staff will help you to get in and, and help them get set up and everything for that. I, I would imagine it'll be an hour, that's about the time that we've been spending. They're just, again, trying to understand concerns and questions that, that residents may have about the process. We don't know where we're going yet. We don't know what it's gonna look like at the end of the day. That's why we have to go through this federal process to be able to, to figure out what it looks like at a build-out scenario. Also, just wanna bring you up to date on Main Street. As we've talked before, we have two phases of Main Street. We don't have enough funding to do those two phases of Main Street right now from thirty East to, to about six hundred West, which is by the UDOT shed. We are petitioning MAG. We've sent the letter and the paperwork into MAG to petition to get some extra funds. We're also seeking some extra funds from UDOT to be able to help us to get to the end of the project. We'll know probably in the next two weeks where that will be. And I'm hoping to bring, if we can get all the planets to align and the stars to line up, then we will bring something to you on the February sixth meeting to award a contract to get going on that work. Recognizing that that's a, that's a two-year long or a two-season long set of work. If we get it on the, in February, it'll probably start in March sometime and get going. And then it will be a, a two-season construction season for them to be able to get that done, unless they decide that they wanna do it faster, but the allotted time will be through the end of the construction season of twenty-twenty-five. The paving season of twenty-twenty-five.
And it's mostly told by the amount of money that's.
Right.
Right. That's the only thing we're fighting.
Yep. We are, we are very short on money, but we believe that through MAG and UDOT, we can come up with the funds to go ahead and get the project constructed to the west end of the west, west extent, which again is out there by the UDOT shed and, and kind of adjacent to the, or, or right up close to the Erkenbrack property, the, the development there. There may be a small gap in there until Erkenbrack does some of their commercial side of things, but, but that will get us to the very extent of what the current design is right now. So O'Reilly is a, is a, is an unknown at this point in time. If they, it's basically whoever gets there the fastest with the most has to build it. If O'Reilly wants to go in before our project gets there, they have to build it. If we get there before their project gets there, we'll build it. So, um, I'm trying to think of other projects, Mayor, that I might have, we talked about the EA and Main Street. I think those are the two big ones that we're working on right now, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Oh, yes, budget retreat, that's a good, that's a good. Thank you, Jason, for that. The, the budget retreat will actually happen before we have our next council meeting, right? So the budget retreat is, is, I'm sorry, the budget planning sessions will be on February second from five to ten PM if we need to go that long, and February third from eight AM until around four PM. We, we usually try to end up a little early if we can, but I imagine that this is gonna be a fairly big year with some new council members kind of bringing them on board and getting up to speed and that kind of thing. And so we'll do, we'll do the best that we can and, and I know that your directors right now are working feverishly to put their presentations together for their, what their needs are and their concerns are and where they wanna go with, with what their needs are for the budget. Oh, yeah, thanks for that, Jason, 'cause that will happen before our next council meeting. Any other questions on any other projects or items? There, oh, Jason has a fifth Tuesday holiday. This, in two weeks, on the thirtieth, there is a fifth Tuesday holiday that, there is no planning commission, there is no DRC and there is no city council meeting. So that's a, that's a, that's a rare fifth Tuesday holiday that Jason revels in.
A holiday for Jeff too.
Oh, okay, good.
Because he's, he attends a Tuesday midnight meeting every week.
That's right, that's exactly right. So he has a holiday too. Congratulations on the holiday.
I hadn't even noticed that, so thank you.
Okay, uh, Art.
Well, I was gonna mention the neighborhood meeting, and it's been mentioned. I was gonna mention the retreat, it's been mentioned, and we don't have a city council meeting for three weeks now. However, Friday, the second of February is Groundhog Day. If you've seen the movie, that day never ends.
That's going to turn it from five to ten, Art.
It may be premature, since it's only the middle of January. Do we have any feel for what's already happened up the canyon with the snow that we received?
Oh, just so you know, I, we watch the snow and the water content pretty, pretty carefully. We're sitting about forty-three inches, I think. Water content, we're at ten inches. About a third of what we get, a little more than a third of what we get for the whole year. I think we're right in line with a normal year.
I'm just concerned about damage being done to what's already been trying to be fixed.
No. In fact, they left the road closed sign up, and... But even, even the ranger said, you want us to just let him go? And, and the contractor said, well, it's up just because we don't have guardrails on the side of those big walls that are up there. So, if you go up there, you, you're taking your life in your hands or whatever, 'cause it's fifteen-foot fall down into the creek. It's, it's beautiful, they, they have, when I talked to Larson's the other day, they have all of the box culverts, uh, on order, they're getting ready. They're hoping, and in fact had the, the... We really would like to get up in, early in May, and I started to laugh. And, uh, he said, what are you laughing at? And I said, well, May or whenever you can get in there because of the snow. They're very much aware of it, they've left some stuff, so they're set to go, and they've got all their equipment stored here in Santaquin. Scrubbing for the rail cliffs. All the contract, or all the guys that work for the contract have had inner work right here in Santaquin, and a few of the guys live right here close. The superintendent lives in Spanish Fork, I think. They're all excited, and they have bought into this. The superintendent has said to me multiple times, I love this canyon. This is the greatest canyon, I want to do the best job at it. Larson's have let him spend a little extra money on things, because he thinks he's... Things could be done better here or there, it's the little things that they're doing, so...
Are we doing any pairing up with the county or, or somebody with, with solar security cameras up there to try to reduce the vandalism?
Working on it.
Yeah, we, we had a donation today, and, uh, people in town have invested in getting some cameras. We're on our way. You know, if you guys wanna crack open the wallet and donate with them, you can do that, but, uh, it's local guys that want it, they're tired of seeing...
And it'll be solar, so we don't have to worry about power.
Yeah.
But, but we hopefully can have good enough cameras that we can at least get license plates and those types of...
And it, it, what we're hoping for is a live feed right down to the PD. So if it happens at a time when somebody can act to it, much better.
How about a bear trap, would that work?
I've thought a lot worse than things.
We have other things.
There's things than that, but we have a lawyer sitting with us, just be careful.
Bear, bear traps are out, sorry.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, thanks.
Jeff?
I was just gonna mention the legislative session. Probably gonna get some texts and emails to contact our, our legislators.
Did I send you guys the contact information for all your legislators? If I didn't, I will do that in the morning.
Already have it, yeah.
I, I will send that, and I would, I would definitely, um, Senator Hinkins, Senator Owen, Senator McHale, and Congress Representative Welton. I would definitely get on their texting and email list and help them to understand that you are watching and, and will be contacting during the legislative session. I will send out any kind of, um, like, short-term blast that I get from ULCT to say, hey, we need to contact them about this or that. I think we may have had a half a dozen last year, something of that nature. So it's usually not a lot of spam for me, but it might be a little.
If you, uh, go on the UL, or just Google ULTC bill tracker, you'll get on their website, you can see all the bills that specifically they're tracking, and if they're for, against, or neutral on it, and that's good information to have. All I got.
I don't think I have anything. I was gonna bring up some of those things, the, the meeting we had with, uh, McHale and, uh...
Welton.
Doug Welton.
Yeah, when we met in, uh, Payson there. Uh, good meeting, and it's good just to have them on the radar and watch what happens in the legislative session. That's all I have.
Travis?
I didn't know what, pushed the button, sorry. I met with the library board last week, they talked about some of their, uh, fundraising ideas they have for the quarter. They're excited. I'm gonna try and match that level of enthusiasm. So, and tomorrow, I'm heading up with the, uh, Santaquin New City Council up to the Elected Officials Day, so...
Nice.
I'll try and bring back as many as we take, but no promises.
It would probably be helpful to do.
That's all I've got.
Uh, I got a few things. We have Lisa Bloom who, uh, owns Cars, and they were nominated for... spotlighted at, at the, uh, chamber in February. So going there is a support for them as well. I've, I've tried to contact Jim this week and, uh, talked to him yet.
No, he's been out of town.
We were actually going to meet with her and try to spend some time. She isn't out at the Cars all the time, but I think it's, it's really a good opportunity for us in town, spotlight, uh, south exit, and, 'cause we're gonna see some growth there. And neat things go on, so I like that. Met with a couple of businesses in the last few days and had some intriguing requests. Restaurant that wants to... Even though we just lost one, family have been here before. So, you know, that's just one of those things, what can we find? How, what can you do? Where, where could we help them? But I just want you to think. Have a thought, shoot it to me, and I'll meet with them. Uh, still moving along with everything out at the park, out at the industrial park. Have met today, uh, and over the last few days, Norm and I were looking at grants that will help us in different areas. Uh, John was with us today as we talked about, uh, recreation grants that were... Also contacted the mayors, uh, in a few of the close cities to support us in these grants in particular, when it is, uh, in common with them and especially for the library. And everybody so far has said, yeah, let's go with this, I'll send you a letter, which is something that, uh, was requested of us as we've been... Think we're moving along really well with, uh, interchange project, and it's fun to see the way that they treat the businesses so far and the property owners, or the UDOT people to actually come right out and say, what we end up in the end is better access, easier ways to get in, better way to accomplish things. I think they draw the best out of these businesses. Still have those same kind of, uh, challenges as we go down Main Street, but the previous administration before we got here already had been doing work with the businesses on Main Street. I went down and met with Public Works today. Lot of work on our, our, uh, snowplows, uh... Two thousand ten trucks that blew a computer. Hopefully, we'll have a new snowplow, but I'll bet it's not before summertime, the way things are going. What you can live with.
Jason's gonna request one in our budget retreat, and it's, it's eighteen months to two years to get delivery.
This one has been three, three and a half?
Yeah.
The first budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, it's crazy, there's a lot of work in getting there. Uh, this one's ready to go, so hopefully, they'll finish it up and we'll get it in. Made a lot of progress, there've been a, a couple of developers we've spent a lot of time with. Thank the staff, especially... Work that we have to do to make sure that this city is... Excited to see... Eric. John, when we met with him, he has been almost over-anxious at times. Eric is a little more calm, but you know what? To have the vision to bring, uh, hundred thousand square feet of business. We're not, uh, opposite, we are business-friendly. I'm, I am grateful. I'm grateful for all the things that you guys do, the work that you put in. Got a lot ahead. Taking a step at a time, but taking some pretty big steps in the last couple of years. Thanks, I'll... Motion to adjourn. For a second?
I'll second it. Normal third.
Don't really wanted to.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion adjourned.